One, the whole multiple county industrial parks in Calvin County, South Carolina. They know the benefits related there to the.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. This is the public hearing that's being held before a third reading this evening will be considered by council on the amendment to the ordinance which allocates our multi-county industrial park fees as we would be part of Lexington County. We're doing it for several purposes, the school district, the White House, to be able to have full fiscal autonomy, as you know they approached us about that. And one of the problems with that was that if we just gave the fiscal autonomy without changing this agreement, the fee distribution percentages would be altered simply by one of the two bodies changing their mileage rates, that's the way it was set up previously. And so we wanted to make sure that we froze those existing percentages and at the same time partnered with the school district, a way to distribute future fees, not existing future fees, in a way that allows us to have an infrastructure fund off the top, economic development infrastructure fund, ten percent for future fees and the percentage after that would remain the same. One change from second reading until now, we had to deal with how we were going to deal with the fire district villages in both cases, in both of our fire districts. And we have decided that whatever the fire district villages are, just like we take the one percent off top, Lexington County as we've always done, we will also distribute fire district villages, either the Sandy Run Fire District or the County County Rural Fire District, based on what that is off the top, and then everything else will kick in underneath that. That's a very short explanation before the public hearing. We have Will Johnson here, who's been the attorney helping us on this, if there's any more technical information needed on that.
Anyone have a question or comments? If not, we are the public hearing on twenty nineteen dash one. I'd call you here for twenty seconds, two thousand nineteen Calvin County Council meeting to order. I would appreciate if anyone who came in would please sign the register in the back so we can know we are who've been there. John, if you have something to do?
Yes, sir. Lord, again, we thank you for your presence. But just ask you to join us as we conduct the business of the people of Calvin County, that you give us wisdom and guidance as we go along. We pray to be with our chairman too, Lord, and Brigham, we help Lord, just bless him in this time, he's having medical difficulties. Lord, just bless us as counties and people. We praise you in Christ's name. Amen.
Yeah, approval of the year boy in two thousand nineteen regular meeting?
So moved.
Second. Poppy moving to second. Any further discussion with that? Holy favor of eye. Likewise, eyes have it. Any committee reports? Any appointments?
No, sir.
No resolutions or proactionations. Apparently, we have recognition of Calvin County, Calvin County, Magic Swamp, and.
Well, yeah. Thank you, Ms. Chairman. And Ms. Swafford, come up while I grab them for a second. The choice of very short, a reputation of chicane, so we congratulate her in person, or very longly if she chose not, if she chose to come and get shorter introduction. You know, Ms. Swafford handles our, directs our county council, county county council and agent, and I want you to know that every year, I think every year, Ms. Swafford is, every two years, that they put these services out of the cog before I talk about them. Whenever they do it, it's a, I know they just recently put all of the contract services, the agent services at the cog out, and those include things like evidence-based disease prevention programs, home-delivered meals, conflict meals, et cetera. And of the six, or the groups from the six counties that put in for these services, the county county council agent was the only agency to receive the award contract for every service they applied for. And I just wanted to let y'all know that and congratulate Ms. Swafford and give her the chance to make any comments she would like on that as well.
Okay. Well, first of all, I just want to take this opportunity to thank you for your continued support for matching and operational funds. And a little bit of background, we are a county agency that was formed by resolution in nineteen seventy-six. And Councilman Summers, the head is not here, he was here and he was a part of that during that time. I just want you to know that being a part of county government provides us with stability, it gives our employees confidence, and it gives us resources that leverages our federal state funding so that we can provide more services to the seniors of our county. And over the past thirty years, as director, I've endured many changes in the requirements of the Old Americans Act funds from the federal government as well as from the State Office on Aging. And one of those changes that were made that helped raise some patent laws is that in early two thousand, the State Office on Aging implemented a competitive procurement process, which Mr. Bellinger just alluded to. And so we were no longer considered sub recipients of the funds, but the services were put out for bid, the successful vendors then became contractors. And usually the award, you could ask the question, they do put it out every year and the award is given, and then you're given, they can renew it every year up to four years. So the competitive process really does happen with about every five years. But in the world we live in, we're just getting into the society that's just more and more competitive, so it just becomes, you know, more difficult to procure these services. And this year was a big year, and so we received notification on April fourth that we did work as a successful submitter for all the five services. And Mr. Bellinger just told you that we grew down in hemoglobinism, transportation, cancer, and the disease prevention program. And the reason why I feel like we were able to secure these services is because the agency has never had an audit or program monitoring exception due to our deborations, due to our dedicated care and compassionate staff. Also, the agency has been successful in securing other grants and services for de-gifters, and this helps lower our overhead costs. But most importantly, it's due to your support, you county council for funding us the leverage that we need to increase the number of services that we can provide above what the grant wants. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank you for that, because it does give us an advantage over some of the other RFP vendors. Are there any questions that you have?
Jenny, I just want to thank you for the job you've done over the years and thank you for having been there longer than me in the council. So we appreciate what you've done. I think, you know, the seniors and the young people are kind of passionate in my heart, and I appreciate what you're doing.
Well, in the twenty ten census, Calvin County was the county that grew by the largest percentage of elderly people. And I have a feeling that's just continuing. It's been a privilege to be able to serve the elderly of this county. And I was a young twenty-four year old whenever I started, and I can remember that first day I walked in and those people looked at me and were like, what are you doing here? But it's been a privilege. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Dr. Weem Fulner, lowest man at council office. He got called.
Dr. Moore, you're going to use the over give right?
I would, if you'd.
Go ahead and watch.
I just dream it to watch.
I didn't reserve seats.
I didn't want to blind them.
I'm on the left.
Thank you. Do you have a quick one?
Thanks.
Do you want to draw or do you?
I'm going to use.
Okay, put me on front.
Good evening. Thank you all for allowing me to present once again this year. I always enjoy being here and talking with y'all. I want to thank Ms. Swafford. We work with her and her organization all the time, and I got to tell you, it's one of the top-notch operations that we work with. We thank you very much for what you do for the seniors here in Calvin County. So thank you. Appreciate that.
Dr. Moore, can I have you just?
Oh. That better? That better?
That's better.
Okay. I won't take too much of your time. I just want to go through a couple of different things. The cog has involved with us past year. I'm trying to go through some numbers for the first nine months of the year. Y'all know a little bit about us. We were established in sixty-seven by Governor McNair. As an economic development district, we are more or less an organization that was formed by EBA, the Economic Development Administration, way back then. And our primary purpose is economic development and quality of life in the region. As a board, we have thirty-nine board members in Calhoun County. Ms. Helen Carson Peterson is a member. Mr. James Tagler, Roger Hill, Joe Sykes, Chairman Summers, and Ken Westbury. Here are all members, as well as Russell Ott. He's an executive official at its position. Y'all know some of the different programs that we do, working with community development block grants. I know that you have that on your agenda this year. Working with local and regional planning, doing planning, doing some top plan and zoning for different local governments, economic development, which I mentioned before, EBA. We also have the Lower Savannah Regional Housing Consortium, the Aging and Disability Transportation Resource Center, the AAA, tourism, which is something we don't do here. We're in a different region here. Workforce development and transit. And so a couple of different programs that we do, four divisions. We have about forty-five people working for us right now. And that's this past year, actually, this year's budget's going to be about twelve million dollars. So we run about twelve million dollars through the organization throughout the six county region. Here in Calhoun County, since its inception back in sixty-nine, we found it off the ground, for every dollar that Calhoun County gives us as a cog, we're able to return on the investment a hundred dollars. So we feel real good about that and a number of the different programs that we offer and supply here in the county. Just to talk a little bit about all the good work that the council on aging does here. And they do some wonderful, wonderful stuff. Mentioned to you last year and the year before that at that time it was Lieutenant Governor's Office on Aging. Now it's the Department on Aging. It's now a full department over at the Governor's Office. And we work with them to administer the Older Americans Act. And so for the first nine months of this year here in Calhoun County, we've done what we call assessments. That's going out into seniors' homes, figuring out what their needs are, and hopefully making that transition so that we find out that they need a conflict meal, and they need a transportation to the facility. We're able to work with Jenny's folks, get them that ride to the meal site, and then get them that meal, have them spend that time there. Maybe they need exercise or whatever they may need, figuring all that kind of stuff out. We also are able to, when we go into those homes, work with them on transportation and transit. Where they need for rides, where they usually go, maybe it's to the doctors, maybe it's shopping, maybe it is out over to the council on aging, whatever it may be. We'll be able to find different opportunities to serve seniors in the county. In addition to that, we remember things here in regards to home-delivered meals, as well as conflict meal site and providing meals to seniors here in the county. Also in here is homemaking services, which I believe is part of that contract relating going out as well. That's real important for folks. Used to be Lieutenant Governor's Office, now it's the Governor's Office. And one of the things that they highly believe in is that they want seniors to stay in their home as long as they possibly can. And so these services are there to help them to continue on to stay in their homes as long as they possibly can do that. One of the programs that we've been trying to continue to get out into the communities is the caregiver respite program. I've mentioned this before. To take care of your grandmother, your uncle, whoever it may be, you're the primary caregiver and you need a break. What we're able to do is to come in, help you to hire a service that will take care of grandma, your uncle, whoever it may be, for a week or whatever it is, so that you can get that kind of break. And so this first nine months of the year, we provided twenty-three grants in Calhoun County for about thirty thousand dollars. Ladies and gentlemen, this past year, in our budget, we have close to three quarters of a million dollars in there, okay? Three quarters of a million dollars. So please, please, if you know folks who are needing that service, please let them know that this is something that we have. We have lots of money, and we've got lots of these grants out. We want to see more of those grants come over here to Calvin County. One of the other things that we do is the long-term care ombudsman. And that's when our staff goes into the nursing homes to make sure that the seniors are getting the care that they need. This year, the first nine months of the year, we made nine friendly visits, and we met with sixty Calvin seniors in regards to their rights being in these facilities. In the area of planning, right now, we're working with the town of St. Matthews on their comprehensive plan. We hope to have that finished by late summer. Right now, we have no time on projects for transportation, but we are in the process of gearing up for the next round. And Roger Hill, Elaine Goodboden, and Voice Till are all on the Transportation Technical Advisory Committee. In the area of economic development, one of the things you have on your agenda later on, I wanted to mention real quick. Yeah, it's the planning grant. And so you're going to mention, or have on your agenda a little bit later about the redevelopment block grant planning grant that comes through us that I'm going to ask you to sign tonight, what the grant does. And I know we had straight from the state staff. The grant will be used to provide redevelopment block grant planning, capacity building, project development, and technical assistance to local governments. So what they end up doing is they give us the grant, and what we're able to do from there is do a number of different things. We're able to attend trainings, but when we come over to talk with your folks about the project, we usually don't get paid for that. We may work with you a couple of days to figure out that project is applicable for this kind of funding. And if it is, then we start to work towards that grant, but we don't get paid for that early stuff. So what that grant allows us to do is get paid for some of the early work that we do on any kind of economic program that we're sitting back, coming over here, talking with y'all about. So it also goes to the needs assessments. And recently, we did the needs assessments here, and actually in all six counties, and we've let people know about that. This past Thursday night, we had our board meeting here. Those are the basis of what we do in the area of redevelopment block grants and how we are able to say that we go out to apply for these kinds of projects for you, sewer, water, whatever it may be, that this is where the impetus comes from. People in the community have said, this is what they want, and this is what they need. And so that's where that comes from. So that's what that grant's all about. Also, just recently, I think in the last two or three weeks, we completed a homeowner occupied rehabilitation project in St. Matthews, the first one for this calendar year. Y'all are a part of the Lower Savannah Regional Housing Consortium, and Tyron Gansler is on that committee. In the area of workforce, just to let you know, Pat Black is one of the members. We have another position open that needs to be filled by Calhoun County, and we are meeting with Pat Black on a couple of different things, I believe, next week. Anyway, that being said, I told you last year about the jumpstart program, and that is for rising seniors. So you're in your junior year right now, you're about to be a senior, and with some specific qualifications, what we do is we work with those students to get them jobs. And so we fund those jobs over the summertime. And the whole idea of those jobs is soft skills. We hopefully get those kids in there that they learn how to suit up, how to show up, and those soft skills that they need to be able to start to work in the workplace as they move forward that senior year, getting out of high school, maybe not sure what they're doing. But they learn those skills for that summertime, and we're able to pay them to be able to do that. And so we take care of all those costs. One of the other, a couple of the other things that we've been doing here recently is two incumbent worker training for the employer. Those are contracts to upgrade skills, and Devro and SEFA Industries both use those grants. In addition to that, we've had one rapid response, IWT contract, which was with Pable Craft, and making sure that they can revert a layoff. So getting that training out there so that they do not have to lay anybody off, but they can keep those people on and keep them working. And finally, I know tomorrow, USC Satihatchee Senator Graham has a workshop. It is for housing month this month, and I know that we've got something going on with Orangeburg County. I believe it's Wednesday. We had our meeting here last week, was it last week? Wonderful food. Thank y'all very much. Appreciate that. Next, executive committee and board meetings coming up. We're in Banburg and Aiken. And with that, that's just what I wanted to go over with y'all. And do you have any questions on that? I think, thank you very much for your support. We greatly appreciate what y'all do for us. And we wanted to send our best wishes to the chairman and make sure that he's okay. Thank you very much.
Dr. Muller, can I ask you just one question on that jumpstart program? Are we aggressive enough on that program to do you some support?
You're a whole lot better than, yes, sir, you really are. It took a little while to get off the ground, but yes. Having eleven in there for your community is really good. Can we use more students in there? Absolutely, sir. Okay? That's one of those, I love this program because we're paying for those kids. Doesn't matter where they end up. We're going to take care of that cost, okay? But the whole idea, like I said, is that soft skills. How to show up on time, how to dress properly, how to pave that work environment. And so many of those kids from last year came through that program and said, oh, my God, this was wonderful. I really learned a lot. And some of these kids with their situation were not able, were able to help their families in times. One of the kids said, you know what? My mom couldn't work for two weeks. I was able to pick up the electric bill that month. I mean, that was just amazing that that kid realized that he could be a part of that family and contribute in that way. It was really powerful stuff. So, yeah. Could you always, will we always use more students? Be interested in that? Absolutely. There's no other questions? Once again, thank you all very much. I appreciate your support.
Thank you. Thank you for that report, Dr. Muller. Next is Matt Trenal, Sheriff's Department, transfer funds.
Good evening. Nothing formal. Honestly, we're just meeting this year and doing these actions. You know, earlier today, I was saying about last week, we're getting close to the end. We've got a few line items that are kind of out of whack, namely the one that caused a big issue during the year is our overtime line has been drawn up to, it's close to thirty thousand dollars over the budget. So I think that's probably due to our shortages in the position. We have to have guys kind of fill in those gaps as far as coverage is concerned. So all I'm coming to night is going to bring you guys, it is a pretty decent size amount of money, thirty thousand dollars, move from existing salary line item into overtime. We're not, we're not over by any means on the overall salary line, just that overtime line. So I just need to transfer some funds between that and just make sure that each line item is good, we're not going to be over budget on anything. And I want to do it in front of council, by the way, just for transparency there, if I think so. Shout for the mother.
Bill, you need a motion on that.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we allow the sheriff's department to move line item monies from regular salaries to overtime to cover if there's shortages.
Poppy moving to second. Any further discussion?
Um, and I'll prepare a form, and the chairman will have to sign it, since it's council group, so I'll get that to you.
Sorry, can't take anything from the floor.
Sorry.
Any further discussion? Holy favor of eye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise, the dis golf program for the board. Ted, do you have any other old business?
Yes, sir.
Under new business approval of intergovernmental agreement for the annual loss of bad accounts of building external planning grant.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. You just heard, actually, from Dr. Muller about a little bit of this, but I want to tell you, every year when it comes to dealing with community development block grant funds, the cog representing the six counties applies for a planning grant from the Department of Commerce to be able to do just what Dr. Muller was talking about. And we've done this every year since I've been here, but I believe so, certainly the last few years. And Orangeburg County is the lead county listed on it, as they have been in previous years. And we have to sign a program certification form, a conflict interest form, and then we have to sign that intergovernmental agreement between the six counties. And before you tonight is the intergovernmental agreement for it. I have to, I need y'all to authorize me to sign that. And this is like, this is nothing different from previous years.
Andy, a motion for approval of the agreement?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the intergovernmental agreement for the annual cog external planning grant.
Second.
Poppy moving to second. Any further discussion? Holy favor of eye.
Aye.
Likewise, eyes have it. Number appearances under old business approval of the disco program for Calhoun Hills Golf Complex.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. This is a brief reminder to the council. At the March eleventh, excuse me, March twenty-fifth council meeting, you received a presentation from Mr. Red Cole, who originally approached Colonel Nelson about his interest in potentially bringing a disco program to Calhoun Hills Golf Complex. Rep. Viddy, February first, they asked him to come to the meeting on March twenty-fifth. He did. At that meeting, council requested that he bring back a proposal and put it in front of council for consideration at a future meeting and that proposal was...
Mr. Chairman, I move that we postpone dealing with this issue at this time until it can go through our recreation committee and we can get a more informed decision on how we want to present this to the full council.
I second.
Poppy moving second. Have you postponed the approval of the disco program? Any further discussion? I think Ken's not only, when I count it, looked that up, counted it, and I got some more questions also. So I think we want to make sure before we approve this that, before we go forward with this. Not that we're bucking it, but the committee, everyone in that committee also, we need more time to study that. And I think the whole council hadn't had a chance to kind of enable some of that before we, before we do that. Any other, any other discussion?
Just get your men together and make the proposal once you have a chance.
Yeah, once, once we're comfortable, we're making a proposal.
All your favor eye?
Aye.
Opposed likewise, the approval of disco programs or the board. Ted, do you have any other old business?
Yes, sir.
Under new business approval of intergovernmental agreement for the annual loss of bad accounts of government external planning grant.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. You just heard actually from Dr. Molar about a little bit of this, but I want to tell you that every year when it comes to dealing with community development block grant funds, the cog representing the six counties applies for a planning grant from the Department of Commerce to be able to do just what Dr. Molar was talking about. And we've done this every year since I've been here, but I believe so, certainly the last few years. And Orangeburg County is the lead county listed on it, as they have been in previous years. And we have to sign a program certifications form and a conflict interest form. And then we have to sign that intergovernmental agreement between the six counties. And before you tonight is the intergovernmental agreement part. I have to, I need y'all to authorize me to sign that. And this is like, this is nothing different from previous years.
Ken, the motion for approval of the agreement?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the intergovernmental agreement for the annual cog external planning grant.
Second.
Poppy moving second. Any further discussion? All your favor eye?
Aye.
Likewise eyes have it. Ordinance twenty-eighteen dash twenty-seven is on hold. Can we go forward with ordinance twenty-nineteen dash one? Ordinance authorizing an amendment to allocation of revenue generated from one or more multi-county industrial parks within Calhoun County, South Carolina, and other matters related there to have a motion for approval of third reading of that.
Salute.
Poppy moving second. Any further discussion?
You got a, you have a motion? That's a head session.
John, you said?
Yes.
All your favor eye?
Aye.
Opposed likewise eyes have it. Unadministrative, straighter page, Ted, building, ground, and planning report.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Ms. Chairman. The building and planning department report is before you. We want, this is for March twenty-nineteen. The report will tell you we had ninety-four total inspections. We did thirty-three total permits, ten plaque reviews, and one zone variance. And the total revenue taken in is seven thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars. And they're doing a good job in that department. I'll be happy to take any question you have about that.
Anyone have any questions, Ted, on that? Ted, anything else?
Yes, it is two of our items. There's no action either on either of these, but they were both, they both came up today. One, we found out today from the South County Department of Commerce that they are not doing a formal industry appreciation event this year as they've done in previous years. As you know, in the last two years, we've been doing an industry appreciation golf tournament bouncing off of the state's week because they wanted the counties to do something locally. This year, it is completely up to the counties if we want to do an industry appreciation event, the state is not. And so I just want y'all to think about that and we'll, you know, come to see if you have any interest in that. Just let me know when you come back with it before y'all believe that. We've had, it's been successful, but we've tied, it's been tied to the state event previous years. So we just want y'all to know. We found that out today, so we weren't able to put the thing formal out. And then also just a reminder, by Wednesday is the department heads' presentations to council on their budgets. It starts at nine fifteen. It'll probably take all day. And public is invited if they want to. It's the same yearly event y'all do every year with the department heads and their vote request. And that is all I have, Ms. Chairman.
Ken, what, when do we do that industry? When was that thing normally done? What time of the year?
In May.
In May?
Okay, we don't have anything for executive session, so I'll entertain a motion for, no, the press have anything? Okay. Is there anything else for your turn?
Chairman, I move with your turn.
Second.
Poppy moving second. All your favor eye?
Aye.
Opposed likewise eyes have it.